Call to order, City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for October 18th, 2023. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting, call in at 646-558-8656. Meeting ID 795-950-7035, passcode 907148. Agenda item number two, attending serving on the commission this evening is Donna Greco, Jim Babinski, Starly Arias, myself, Greg Mealy, also an attendance, our city planner, Jeremy Lightford. Moving out to agenda item number three, minutes for approval for A, September 20th, 23, motion?
Make a motion in a minute.
Have a motion, have a second, thank you, Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move one abstention from Commissioner Arias. The time is 7:02, moving out to agenda, item number four, public hearing, beginning at 7:00 PM, November 29th, 2023, City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A applicant, City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal zoning regulation amendment, group daycare, excuse me, group daycare facilities, section 3.1 subsection 2.40. Serving out the commission this evening is Donna Greco, Jim Babinski, Starly Arias, as a seated member this evening, myself, Greg Mealy, also attendance is our city planner, Jeremy Lightford. I'm sorry.
We're not doing that tonight.
You're not doing that tonight.
This is practicing, folks.
But we're still here.
We're still.
He's got, he's got the agenda.
Okay, let's go out to five. Old business, A, site plan 1467, applicant CG Torrington LLC and SL Torrington LLC, location 1858 East Main Street, proposal, reconfiguration of approved 3,500 square foot retail building site with 3,300 square foot bank and drive up ATM is the applicant in attendance.
Yes, Chairman Mealy, for the record, Kenneth Rika, professional engineer and licensed land surveyor, and I am on Zoom. Can everybody hear me?
Hey, hang on, Ken, we can't hear you.
See if you can get closer to your microphone.
I'm gonna have to kiss my screen to do it. Apparently you can hear me.
But, oh, hold on, let me just check one thing. Right now.
How's that sound?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll turn it down a little.
I'm gonna mute myself because I'm about to cough.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so for the record, my name is Kenneth Rika, professional engineer and licensed land surveyor, and I'm here tonight to represent the site plan. And I'd like to remind the commissioners that this, this site plan was originally approved initially in 2008, and it was actually approved at that point for a drive, a bank with a, a full drive through. And for the, for the longest time, there were no takers for that site. So in 2020, the new owners of the property decided to revamp the site and go with a retail and/or restaurant pad. And we came in with a site plan in 2020 and were approved for that as well. And when they started to market that, lo and behold, the biggest fish that, that decided to bite the bait was a bank and asked us if we could redesign the site again, now in 2023, for a bank pad with a drive up teller window and, and a walk-in service at the bank, and, and that's what we've done. And I, I'd like to share my screen with you now if I can. And I'm going to show this site, site and shelf. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, so that's the site. It mimics the site that was approved in 2008, as far as the boundaries go. There is a, there has, has and always has been a retaining wall planned on the east side of the site, adjacent to an inland wetland area. And that retaining wall is basically in the same place that it has always been, which limits the size of the site and, and what we can do there. And there's a stormwater system that was proposed in, in 2008 that we've also carried forward with all of the plans because it provide, it provides adequate stormwater management for the site itself. So frankly, what, what's going on here is that we're, we're using the same site. We've just reconfigured the building and parking area on this. And, and since we no longer have retail, we've added that drive up teller when, uh, drive up teller machine or ATM machine rather, inside the parking lot. Now, since the last time this plan was presented to you, we have gotten some comments back. And most significantly, the comments came from Fire Marshal Basetta and City Engineer Paul Cousins. And both of those were concerns about access to the site. And, and so we've addressed those now. And the plan in front of you has some red lines on it, and that basically shows you what we've done to address the changes that were required. And I'm gonna zoom in a little bit if I can here, kind of bring it better to life. And, and the, the biggest change was is that we have a, a one-story bank here, but Fire Marshal Basetta requested that we provide access to his hook and ladder truck, which is the, the biggest fire engine that they have. Even though we don't have a second story, the, the rationale behind that was is that they could be fighting a fire somewhere else in the city and need to use that truck to get to an emergency at this site and want to make sure that if that's the case, they absolutely can do that, and that, and that's a hard argument to, to argue with. So, so we took a look at what we needed to do. And we had to rearrange some of the, the curves and the islands a little bit to, to make the plan. They haven't changed very significantly, and every change that we've made is in red. As you're starting out on Route 202 is a, well, let me, I'm gonna back up a bit. Our, our first initial analysis of the fire engine was, was difficult because we had to find a lot of detail on how those things turn. Eventually, we, it took us a little while to do that, but the city of Napa, California, actually, has an identical fire engine to what Torrington has, and they've gone through the exercise and they've published that. And then we use that as the basis for how we can get Fire Marshal Basetta's largest truck in and out of the site. And we initially planned, because it was easier to bring the truck in from Torringford Street and come, uh, come up from the south and, and drive straight into the site and have access and then be able to turn around. And what that caused us to do was change a little bit of curvature on the, on the turn coming in. Uh, we, we modified the painted island a little bit because of the change in curvature and changed the curvature of the center island as well. And then as the truck came around the corner in the one-way fashion, uh, we were hitting the curb here. So we, we had to create what's called a mountable curb. And what that basically means is it's not your average roadside curb. It's a very, it's a tapered curve that is actually drivable and you can drive tires up on it. And that would allow the truck to pass. So we've created a two, a two-foot by two minutes, multiple curb beyond the ATM machine to accommodate the rear wheels of the truck as it comes around the corner to leave. We widened the exit a little bit and softened the curb there. And also right adjacent to our stormwater management system, we've created a bigger radius there, but did not have to change the grading in the basin to do so. And I, and in conversations with the traffic engineering company that works with us on this site and also works with the Connecticut, Connecticut DOT and the Office of State Traffic Administration to permit this site, because it is a major traffic generator, we had a conversation and the, the lead traffic engineer suggested that it's probably pretty likely that in an emergency, a truck may want to be coming up Route 202 or East Main Street from, from the south and coming into the site. And so what we've also done is created an access way that is maneuverable for that truck coming in from 202. We did have to add a mountable berm curb at the main island coming in because we had a little wheel pressure there as well. And in the new access way that provides a straight line access throughout the upper parking lot, the original design at the intersection that is now the trickiest, but we're removing it, we had raised curbing to channel cars with a walkway in between. And so what we've done there is gotten rid of the raised concrete islands there and put painted gore strips, and we still maintain the walkway through here. And we have a, a, a painting and signage plan that does show the, the, the crosswalk coming through here. So that still exists, signs, we have signs all over the place alerting traffic to stop for the crosswalk. But a truck coming in will make the turn in, but then to get around the tight turn for the site, it has to actually cross across the lane, which would mean crossing those former islands. And so we've gotten rid of those and painted them, and the truck can now come in from both directions. It can, as it makes the turn, it does not cross over into this lane. The truck actually stays within its own lane, comes into the site and exits. So we, I brought that to Fire Marshal Basetta yesterday morning, and he was very happy with it. And I believe he sent a letter to Jeremy stating that he's, he's fine with the plan. And we're happy with it because it really didn't change the overall layout. As you can see, there's nothing else really paint colored in red in this drawing. The parking all remains the same. Most of the separation strip dividing the drive-through lane from the traffic going into the bank is pretty much the same. And the, the curbing has changed a little bit, but for all intents and purposes, we managed to pull that off with the least amount of change as possible, and I was very pleased with that. City Engineer Paul Cousins had also talked about doing some extending of curbing down through the middle. But we had to have the conversation with him that the office, the State Office of Traffic Administration has full control over this site and, and actually reviews everything we do in here. And they permit this because of the state highway and the fact that it's a major traffic generator. And he understood that. And, and when I showed him the, the line painting plan, which he didn't really take a look at, he realized that we do have a mechanism for keeping cars in their own lanes coming through here on the painted version. I'll, I'll switch to that real quickly and zoom in on that just to verify that we've got a lot of action going on to make sure that cars go in the right direction here. And when he saw this and saw what we were doing, he fully understood where we were at. And I believe he's also sent Jeremy a letter stating that he's good with the project as it is now. When I met with him, he was fine. And back to the presentation plan, one of the things he did ask for was to create more of a balance in lane size coming through here. And so you can see, we've taken the line striping, and it was about 12 or 13 feet. We've moved it over to try to keep an equal width of lane coming in and an equal width of lane coming out. We were man, we managed to do that and still get the fire trucks in and out of here without crossing over the two double yellow lines here. So I thought that was a, that was a big plus too. I worried that the fire truck was gonna take too wide of a swing, but it manages to get by there as well. So basically, those are the changes from what, what you've reviewed at your last meeting. I do understand there was a, a commissioner question regarding the amount of fill that needed to be brought in from the site, and we've calculated that. And that number is approximately 1,500 cubic yards to make the site not level, but not any steeper than 5% grade coming through. So technically, what that does is it allows for you to park your cars in a fashion that the door swi, doors will not swing over to the neighboring car next to you. So it's, it's not perfectly flat, but it's level enough to keep car doors from swinging wide open. And we have the retaining wall holding that up, and, and it's basically the same, same layout and same amount of fill that we've, we've proposed the last two times. The 1,500 yards, what that equates to is about 90 total loads. When they bring in those loads, they'll be bringing them in one truck at a time and compacting them to provide a stable base here. So they're not, they can't possibly bring that in all in one day or two days. The import of fill will be anywhere between one and two weeks. And if you, if, if we're looking at, at one week, we're probably bringing in, say, a little, a little less than 20 trucks a day, which turns out to be two and a half trucks an hour. If it extends to two weeks to, to get the fill in, it's gonna be pretty much one truck an hour or so, a little, little more than one truck an hour coming in, bringing, bringing materials in. So it's not going to have a drastic impact on any traffic whatsoever. And I think that's what I have for you. I, I did take a look at Jeremy's list, and we are okay with making everything a condition that was listed in the list that needs to be, except I have to caution that Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldis made some recommendations in here. And I can't guarantee, and then we're not going to try to do those with conversations with the traffic engineer. He asked for some flexible delineators in Route 202 to separate traffic coming down. Talking with the traffic engineers, DOT is never going to allow that on their state road. And again, the State Traffic Administration has full control over how we come and how we go out of this site. We'll be working with them. Sergeant Baldis can certainly speak his concerns with them and be considered. And we do not have a problem with that, but the, the access way is, is pretty much owned by the State Traffic Administration. And they've been looking at that now for the past two years, since, since 2020, when we started with the last pad. They've been working on creating an access way and, and more so, an exit way out of the site that is more conducive to pulling cars as they're exiting and forcing them to be in a, in a totally easterly direction by the time they get to 202, as opposed to what is there now. Right now, the cars come out almost straight, a little less, maybe a 70-degree turn, and people try to make the left-hand turn onto East Main Street. The gist of this plan is to get the cars to not be able to make a left-hand turn out of this site. And that's what we're working on with the state. And that's what I have for a presentation. Oh, one, one more thing, and I didn't highlight it in red, but the last plan did have a pylon sign at the, actually inside the right-of-way of the highway out at the main entrance. That pylon sign has been moved to the red curve coming into the chase site. So we've eliminated the pylon from the highway and moved it down here. It's a 29.1 square foot pylon that we have right next to where the pedestrian crossing is. So that car's coming in, we'll see that sign, know that this is the chase, chase bank entry. And that's it, that's what I have. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions commissioners may have.
And with the 202 mountable curb that's being proposed there, what was the traffic pattern of a ladder truck prior to this plan being put in place?
Uh, the, the ladder truck would have to run over that curb. And so we, we added the, the big red blob here. It's a, it's basically a two and a half foot wide concrete lip for it to drive on. The, the truck would have had to have run over the curb. They, they could have done it. It would have been a little harder for them, but they, but they would have destroyed the curb likely doing it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Ken, um, I had the question, I'm sure you know, about the, the fill. And it wasn't a negative question. It was basically my concern or I want it answered was how much fill was it gonna be? Would you answer it, and also how many trucks? Because are they coming in off of 202? And my concern was the queuing on 202? And because of accidents or stuff like that and people being in a maneuver through the shopping center? Or is the construction traffic coming up from the hill to the right? With all your.
We, we could certainly caveat the construction.
So that way it's not on 202.
Yeah, we, we could certainly, as a condition of approval, uh, have the truck traffic for this site coming up, uh, out of, off of Torringford Street.
Right.
Uh, there, there's, there's a push to, to try to reduce the amount of truck traffic coming into this entry anyway.
Right.
But again, because of the mechanism that there's a fairly small site, and they certainly can't pile up 90 trucks in a day and get them in here. They, they, it's impossible to do because they have to, to spread out the, the trucks as they bring the material in, in lifts of six to eight inches and compact those before they can put the next lift in. So they have a storage problem as well as truck traffic problem here. So they're going to have to spread that out over a period of time and kind of be working to fill the site and compact it as the trucks come and go. So you're not going to get a buildup of trucks lined up in, on either street trying to get in.
Right, it was just my concern for the queuing on 202.
That's, it's a legitimate concern for sure.
Yeah, and, and that was it. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Starly, anything?
Are we still maintaining the, uh, the connection between 1858 East Main Street and 1902?
Yes.
Yeah, that is one of the recommendations in there. Yep, I'd be basically just restating the recommendation from the previous approval with emphasis.
But during, during the time of construction where I, I guess the intent is to close off this area so that traffic can flow in between those two adjacent.
You want, you want to take that one, Ken?
Yeah, there may be times where that's necessary. Let me see if I can get back to a full, uh, a better view of the site here. But the activity is gonna take place, you know, outside of the intersection. There'll be times, there, there's gonna be intersection construction that will close this off. There's, there's a full straight track down to the far end to get to Torringford Street from here to, to be able to get out, you know, it's because there is no left-hand turn. So there will be lane closures at times, but they will maintain a way for cars to get in and out. And I think they'll, they'll like to keep this access as open as possible unless they're constructing here and keep the, keep the bulk of construction within the site itself. Let me see if I can find a view that, that works better for this. Now, I don't have an overview of the site in front of me, but this, the roadway, the roadway now exists and they, they can do work and allow you to get in here. Once this is under construction, cars getting to Torrington are gonna have to go south to the opposite end, make the turn there and come down. There are also plans to modify that to make that turn much easier. They're not shown in the presentation materials I have tonight, but they, that, that should be done first so that traffic, when it's forced to go there, has a way to get out easily. And there's a, and you, and this is a big, long, straight line now all the way to that intersection. So even if there's cars queuing, they can queue in the straight line and, and make the turn one at a time as they go.
Thank you.
Well said.
Jeremy, want to dive into here? Please.
GG Torrington LLC and SL Torrington LLC have filed an application to modify plans approved in October 2020 under site plan number 1346. The previous approval was for two commercial building pad sites in the northeastern and northwestern areas of the property, adjacent to East Main Street. Additions to the existing Petco and Walmart stores and the installation of a driveway interconnect between 1858 East Main Street and the adjacent shopping plaza at 1902 East Main Street. This application proposes to modify the single building pad site in the northwestern area of the property for a bank use with a drive-up ATM. The property is 36.82 acres in area and is located in the CIR, Commercial and Industrial Restricted Zone. The plans submitted in connection with this site plan application are titled "Torrington Fair Shopping Plaza Site Plan Modification, 1858 East Main Street, US Route 202 and Connecticut Route 183, Torrington, Connecticut," by Rika Associates LLC, Litchfield, Connecticut, revised to September 24th, 2023, 20 sheets. Architectural plans titled "Proposed Exterior Elevation Elevations" were prepared by Core States Group, Ambler, Pennsylvania, dated February 23rd, 2023, two sheets. Also submitted is a landscape plan sheet dated August 30th, 2023, a lighting plan sheet dated September 20th, 2023, and a sign package by Philadelphia Sign, Palmyra, New Jersey, dated March 7th, 2023, 24 sheets. The current CIR zone and site plan was approved on October 14th, 2020. No new CIR zone locations are allowed under the zoning regulations. Per Section 5.5 of the zoning regulations, significant changes to the development plan for an existing CIR zone are subject to regulations that apply for a zone change. Regulations that were in effect November 2nd, 1989 allow the commission to approve, disapprove, or approve with modification the establishment of the CIR zone provided. No development plan shall be approved, which is inconsistent with the public welfare or which impairs the integrity of this ordinance or which does not fully safeguard the appropriate use of land in the immediate neighborhood. In reviewing the application plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, the proposed project does not make significant changes from the previously approved commercial building pad and parking lot in this area, nor is there a significant change in use from a general commercial building to a bank building. In my opinion, this application will require a site plan modification approval only and not a zone change procedure typical for new projects or significant modifications in the CIR zone. Two, the remaining conditions and plans that are unaffected by this modification should remain in full force and effect from the approval of site plan number 1346. Three, it is the position of the commission at the city's, and the city's planning office that the proposed interconnect between 1858 East Main Street and 1902 East Main Street be constructed as a part of the overall upgrades in addition to the 1858 East Main Street property for the purposes of traffic safety. A neighboring commercial property owner has previously objected to the construction of this interconnect between the two plazas. I recommend that the commission restate its own recommendation for the installation of the plaza interconnect in the promotion of traffic safety and overall public safety. The intersection of Route Wayne 83, Torringford Street, and Route 202, East Main Street is a site of frequent accidents, and the interconnect would aid in relieving some traffic pressures in this intersection. Four, dates on the notes and details sheet, sheet C11 should be updated with the new proposed project start and completion dates. Five, according to the provided zoning table in Section C3 Schematic Site Plan, the proposed bank pad meets the minimum parking requirements for a, for a bank use and building setback requirements set in the 2020 CIR zone adoption. Other staff comments. Economic Development, Rista Malanka, City of Torrington Economic Development Director, verbally indicated her support for the project. Wetlands Conservation, Lighting, Landscaping and Signage, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments in an email to the city planner dated September 19th, 2023, and updated to October 12th, 2023. Wetlands, there are regulated wetlands in the vicinity of the subject property that require wetlands review for this proposal. The applicant submitted a wetland permit modification application on 7/18/23 for the permit, AD 20-09-03, originally issued on 9/5/20, 9/25/20, which will be approved on 10/6/2023. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, the landscaping plan for this project is compliant with section five point one one. Of the city zoning code. Lighting, a lighting plan for this project is compliant with section five point one seven of the city zoning code. Signage. Proposed wall signs and one proposed freestanding sign. And to be moved from adjacent to the city right away. To the internal entrance of the bank pad within the plaza. Meet the requirement of the city zoning regulations. A signed permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section. Five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation. The property contains a conservation easement held by the city of Torrington and overseen by their conservation commission. During their July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three regular meeting. The commission unanimously agreed, the project is entirely outside of the conservation easement. And is therefore compliant with its terms. See the attached memo for details. Architectural Review Committee. The A R C reviewed the initial design package at their September twenty fourth, twenty twenty three meeting. Submittals included typical chase bank. Exterior design pictures, building elevation renderings. A signed package for the building and property. And the overall engineering plan set. Comments on the building design. Particularly the side of the building visible from East Main Street were discussed. Comments were made from members on the lack of identifying markings on the building from the side that is, that is visible from East Main Street. Revisions to elevations and exterior building design will be submitted in response. Updated landscaping and lighting plans were missing from the packet of information. And were subsequently submitted for review at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three A R C meeting. At the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three A R C meeting. The committee discussed the proposed landscaping plan. The members were impressed with the lighting plan designed by. With the plan designed, designed by Earth Tones LLC of Woodbury. The design cut sheets and location of lighting fixtures were also reviewed by the committee. New added building wall signage on the East Main Street side of the building that was requested by the committee. At the previous meeting was reviewed. The committee requested that, that a, that a street address be added to the building that is visible from East Main Street. The committee voted to make a positive recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. On the information and plans submitted at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three A R C meeting. Torrington Area Health District. D A H D offered no comments on the plans. Engineering, Paul Kunsen, city engineer, in an email to the city planner. On October eleventh, twenty twenty three, offered the following comments. In general, I take no exception to this. Site application. My only comment is with regards to the intersection with the bank. I would like to see it modified slightly to reduce the width of the entrance to the bank. To make the flow. Of through traffic more intuitive. I've reached out to the design engineer. And waiting for a return to discuss, to discuss further. Connecticut DOT. Roberto Fernandez, Transportation District Service Agent two with, with Connecticut DOT. Submitted the following comments in an email to the city planner on October second, twenty twenty three. The C T DOT permit office does not have any comments. This project will need to be reviewed by the Office of State Traffic Administration. As it is an O S T A approved site and will require an O S T A review. Should work in the right of way be approved by O S T A, an encroachment permit from this office will be required. Police Traffic. Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus submitted the following comments to the city planner by email. On October third, twenty twenty three. I have reviewed the plans and application for expansion in addition. Is there adequate parking for the square footage of the expansion and, and new building total? If driveway does have more flow coming in from East Main Street. And being put into the plaza directly. The extended pork chop making the right out of the plaza onto Route two oh two. Will hopefully produce lesser chance of people. Going to cut across the goodwill or make a left turn regardless. Is there a possible recommendation of putting flexible delineators? As well in the center of East Main Street? To further deter the cut across to avoid any turning conflicts. I thought I saw that we were going to. Pavement mark. Route two oh two separating the left turn into the plaza from the left turn lane from the intersection at Torringford. I didn't see it on the most recent plans. I think giving the best visibility for that conflict left. And pushing, pushing people cutting across. Making the right out are once again my biggest concerns for this project. I think this set of plans are the best yet when making changes to this. Since the last revision of plans, we have had another fatal crash. With a left turn conflict into the plaza with a Jeep and a motorcycle. I'm trying to avoid any further fatal crashes at this location. O S T A should be open to recommendations on Route two oh two for safety to. To conflict area as they have access to this data as well. Another recommendation to O S T A would be adding more adequate lighting. To the inlet of the plaza headed westbound on Route two oh two. To allow for clear visibility of the area during evening and overnight hours. When it comes to ADA compliance. Tactile pads should be installed at crossings on East Main Street. To the pedestrian refuge island and then back to the other sidewalk at the plaza entrance. There is nothing to prevent anyone with a disability to distinguish this area. Any modifications? To the, to the sidewalk and entrances should have the most up to date ADA compliance. Especially when in the state right of way. Lastly, when it comes to large delivery vehicles, they should not be permitted to make a left from East Main Street into the plaza. They need to continue to use Torringford Street entrance. Tor, Torrenford Street and entrance exiting only onto East Main Street. To make a right or using the Torrenford Street driveway. To make a left to safely get back to westbound on Route two oh two. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta in an email to the city planner. Dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty three, offered the following comments. Good morning. Quickly looking at the site plans, my biggest concern will be the turning radiuses. For the apparatus for the chase bank. The other additions for the future look good for the time being. W P C A. Edward Towsey the third, W P C A Administrator. In a memo to the city planner dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Submitted comments on sanitary sewer discharge permit requirements and best management practices. See attached. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette in an email to the city planner dated October eleventh. Twenty twenty three offered the following comments. Once approved by you, same as usual, permit applications accompanied by good quality plans. Conclusion, I recommend approval of site plan number fourteen sixty seven. To modify site plan number thirteen forty six. For the commercial building pad site. In the northwestern section of the property. For a bank use with a drive up ATM with the following conditions and recommendations. One, all conditions and plans submitted for site plan approval number thirteen forty six. Not specifically modified in this approval shall remain in effect. Two, in accordance with. Plan sheet C three in the submitted plan set. All requirements for parking, stacking spaces and property line setbacks. In the established C I R zone are compliant with the zoning regulations. Three, the commission restates its opinion that the proposed interior interconnect drive between. The eighteen fifty eight and nineteen oh two East Main Street shopping plazas. Be built as part of this application in the previous approval number thirteen forty six. For traffic safety purposes. The applicant shall modify, oh, four, the applicant shall modify the final plans. For filing to address freestanding signage comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus. Assistant Planner. Outlined in his email to the city planner of October twelfth, twenty twenty three. Five, the applicant shall address comments of Paul Kunsen's. City engineer in his October eleventh. Twenty twenty three. I guess that should say email to the city planner. Any modifications to the ATM entry shall be included on the final plans for filing. To the satisfaction of the city engineer. Six, the applicant shall address comments from Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus. In his October third, twenty twenty three email to the city planner. And modify final plans to reflect suggested changes. Seven, the applicant shall follow the comments of Fire Marshal Edward Becetta. In evaluating the accessibility of fire apparatus. Updated review comments from the Fire Marshal shall be required prior to the filing of file, final plans. Eight, the applicant shall follow comments of Ed Towsey, W P C A Administrator. Outlined in his September eighteenth, twenty twenty three memo to the city planner. Regarding sewer discharge permitting. Nine, the applicant shall follow building permit requirements outlined by Building Official Kevin Gillette. In his October eleventh, twenty twenty three email to the city planner. Ten, per comments from Connecticut DOT. An encroachment permit shall be required from Connecticut DOT. Prior to the issuance of zoning permits for the project. Eleven, zoning and grading permits are required prior to the alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Twelve, a foundation as built for the new building shall be required after foundation installation. Thirteen, an annual storm water management report, report shall be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In accordance with section seven point four point five point E. Of the zoning regulations and prior approvals. Fourteen, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two copies of the full approved plan set. Including the engineer stamp and chairman signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of site plan sheets C five and C six. For filing with the city clerk. In accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chair, chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission. An engineer seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk. After the signature of the chairman. And prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to be, to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Ken, do you have anything else to summarize here? You're good?
I have a question. Who would the approximate location of the interconnect be?
It's behind the, well, if you're facing the fronts of the stores, it's behind the right hand corner of Walmart. Past the garden, the garden.
So you would go in through the target? Entry, their driveway?
We should, if they'll, you, you can go in either direction between the two.
Okay.
Yeah. The other one would be, the other side of it would be next to where. Bad Bath and Beyond was Hartford, where Hartford Healthcare is going. It'd be on the side of that parking lot.
Right.
Here. Any other commissioners have any comments? Good. All right, Donna.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan fourteen sixty seven to modify previously. Approved site plan thirteen forty six, applicant G G Torrington LLC and S L Torrington LLC. Location eighteen fifty eight East Main Street. Proposal modifications to a previously approved development pad containing a proposed parking lot. And a thirty five. Hundred square foot commercial building in the northwestern section of the property. And change of use to a bank use with drive up ATM with the following conditions and recommendations. One, all conditions and plans submitted for site plan approval number fourteen forty six. Not specifically modified in this approval shall remain in effect. Two, in accordance with plan sheet C three in the submitted plan set. All requirements for parking, stacking spaces and property line setbacks in the established C I R zone are compliant with the zoning regulations. Three, the commission restates its opinion that a proposed interior interconnect drive between the eighteen fifty eight and nineteen oh two. East Main Street shopping plaza shall be built as part of this application and previous approval. Number fourteen, thirteen forty six for traffic. Traffic safety purposes. Four, the applicant shall modify the final plans for filing to address freestanding signage comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus. Assistant Planner outlined in his email to the city planner of October twelfth, twenty twenty three. Five, the applicant shall address comments of Paul Kunsen, city engineer in his October eleventh. Twenty twenty three email to the city planner. Any modifications to the ATM entry shall be included on the final plans for filing to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Six, the applicant shall address comments from. Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus in his October third, twenty twenty three email to the city planner. And modify final plans to reflect suggested changes. Seven, the applicant shall follow the comments of Fire Marshal Edward Becetta in evaluating the accessibility of fire apparatus. Updated review comments from the Fire Marshal shall be required prior to filing of final plans. Eight, the applicant shall follow comments of Ed Towsey, W P C A Administrator outlined in his September eighteenth, twenty twenty three memo to the city planner regarding sewer discharge permitting. Nine, the applicant shall follow building permit requirements. Outlined by Building Official Kevin Gillett in his October eleventh, twenty twenty three email to the city planner. Ten, per comments from C T D O T, an encroachment permit shall be required from C T D O T. Prior to the issuance of zoning permits for the project. Eleven, zoning and grading permits are required prior to alteration. Or use of the site for the proposed use. Twelve, a foundation as built for the new building shall be required after foundation installation. Thirteen, an annual storm water management report shall be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In accordance with section seven point four. Point five point E of the regulations and prior approval. Fourteen, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer stamp and the chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of site plan sheets C five and C six for filing with the city clerk. In accordance with section. Eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheets. Shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with city clerk. After the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning and grading permits to begin. Construction or site work.
Donna. Read this one.
And fifteen. Construction vehicles and dump trucks shall access the property off Torringford Street, Route one eighty three only.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You motioned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and for the record, Tom Tullman is, uh, attending the meeting as of seven forty four P M.
Thank you, Donna. He's, uh, we only have four, so he is seated, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Moving on to agenda item number, excuse me, five. B, modification to site plan fourteen fifteen. Applicant Prospect Investment Group LLC. Location one ten Scoville Street, proposal. New building to accommodate spray booth. Is the applicant in attendance, please?
Hi.
Good evening.
Ruth Lutz, the owner of Gianni's Autobody.
Dorian Gibbons, owner of the building.
Could you just pull that microphone down just a little bit to your miss? Thank you. Appreciate it.
He's got to do some shuffling.
Yep. One second.
Set up?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you. Right. Obviously we're here, previous meeting had a couple of minor modifications to make, so. Please proceed.
Um, yeah, I think everything should be in playbook. Colby re, uh, drew the prints for, um. The boundaries for, and the property for. Parking and the offsets. And I, I think Jeremy had received that and I think that meets what we needed for that.
So this, this is the, so we were waiting on some. Information on, as, as of the meeting last month, we didn't, we didn't quite have complete plans last month. Um, the building. We had some issues with how close the building was to the, to the existing building, uh, the proposed building. The existing building. And we had to, uh, have. Bill Colby and the owners work out, work out, uh, some, some offsets because we're only allowed to do that. Ten percent addition. Onto the building, so, um. So they're showing that, that, uh, those items are, are built within this plan. Uh, I don't.
And there's going to be some demolition to the existing, uh. Buildings that's going to offset this.
I'm just going to scroll this a little bit, so we can see. There we go. We can actually see the zoning table. So that. It just, uh, just scrolled it so we could see the zoning table. Um, the calculations are there to. Um.
to show that we haven't gone over the ten percent threshold. Reason for that is this is a R six zone. So it don't, this is a, the, the whole use on this property is a, is a grandfathered use, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. So we have a piece of our regulations that allows a one-time ten percent square footage addition. Um, so to keep that under ten percent, they had to do some demolition for the, to get that spray booth square footage.
Okay. And obviously, they've accomplished that, so we're in good shape.
Yeah, and that's why I just moved, just so you could see those calculations on the, on the table.
Any commissioners have any comments? Starling. Jeremy, why don't you dive into your memo?
Sure. Prospect Investment Group LLC has filed an application for property at one ten Scoville Street. Tax assessors map one fifteen, block zero one nine, lot zero one three, to modify a previously approved site plan number fourteen fifteen that was approved in August twenty twenty-two. The previously approved plans allowed for a one hundred and ninety-two point five square foot addition onto the existing building. A special exception was approved as part of the previous application to allow for a one-time addition of up to ten percent to structures with non-conforming uses. This application proposes the following modifications to the previously approved plans. One, construction of a nine hundred and ten square foot, twenty-six by thirty-five detached spray booth building. Two, modification of the parking alignment to provide eight parking spaces on site. Three, removal demolition of six hundred and sixty-five point five square feet of the existing building to compensate for the added square footage for the new detached building. The property is owned by Prospect Investment Group LLC, is zero point four one acres in area and is located in an R six residential zone. The current use of this property is a motor, motor vehicle repair garage under zoning regulations section three point one, table of permitted uses subsection eight point three zero. The property was initially approved as an automotive garage in nineteen seventy-seven, at which time the property was zoned industrial. A subsequent, a subsequent zone change around nineteen ninety, exact date unknown, rezoned the property to R six residential. The automotive repair garage use is considered a legal, non-conforming grandfathered use. Section five point twelve point three point A of the zoning regulations allow for a one-time addition of up to ten percent to structures with non-conforming uses by special exception. A special exception for this one-time addition was approved under special exception number twenty-two oh six and Site Plan number fourteen fifteen on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Plans submitted are titled Site Development Plan prepared for Prospect Investment Group LLC, one ten Scoville Street, Torrington, Connecticut, by Colby Engineering and Consulting LLC, Goshen, Connecticut, revised to October twelfth, twenty twenty-three, one sheet. Staff has met previously with the property owner and engineer to discuss the project prior to this, prior to this meeting. Uh, I should say something about recommendations, but it doesn't. Uh, number one, the applicant should further calculate parking on the zoning table on the final plans for filing. The dimensions of the office area should be provided on the zoning table to show the requirement for one parking space for the, to show that the requirement for one parking space for the office use are met. The parking required for automotive painting square footage should be added to the chart, one space per one thousand square feet. The applicant, the application appears to meet the total maximum parking requirements. Two, the previous special exception approval for the maximum one-time ten percent expansion of a non-conforming use remains valid for this project. Only the site layout is proposed to be changed. A site plan modification approval is required for this application. Three, all site layout and approval conditions that are unchanged from the previous site plan and special exception approval should remain, should still remain in effect. Four, the proposed spray booth building is greater than the allowed maximum accessory structure size of six hundred square feet in the R six residential zone. However, the commission may allow this larger structure since the proposed four hundred and ninety square foot area of the existing structure to be demolished is currently non-conforming within the side yard setback. The proposed demolition will bring a portion of the building into compliance for supre, for the side yard setback. Other staff comments? Economic development, this application was not referred to Rista Malanka Economic Development Director. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the city planner dated October fourth, twenty twenty-three, offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject properties that would require wetlands review for the, for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, per section five point eleven point two point B, planted non-deciduous trees must have a minimum height of eight feet. In the plan, arborvitae is indicated as the preferred planting species, but eastern red cedar would be a good alternative. Rather than using a single species, it is suggested that a combination of both arborvitae and eastern red cedar are planted in the event that one of those species is affected by a specific pest or disease. Planted trees must be protected from vehicles by curbing, railing, landscape timbers, or another suitable substitute. Buffer vegetation, trees and grass should be maintained in good order and replaced if necessary. Existing vegetative screening along the southeast corner of the lot along Scoville Street near the dumpster should be retained or enhanced. Lighting, no lighting additions or removals are proposed or recommended as part of this application. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. Assigned permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for Review and Comment. Architectural Review Committee, this project was not referred to the ARC for comment. Engineering, Paul Conson, City Engineer, offered no comments on this modification. Comments offered in the initial approval from August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two are still in effect. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, in an email to me dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, stated that he had no comments on these plans. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Basetta, in a letter to me dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, offered comments on requirements for fire department lock boxes and compliance with life safety codes. See attached. WPCA, Edward Towsey the third, WPCA Administrator, in a memo to the city planner dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, commented on requirements for sewer discharge permitting, wastewater discharges and best management practices for cleaners, detergents, oils and grease. See attached. Building, comments submitted from building official Kevin Gillette in a letter dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two to the city planner in the initial approval are still in effect. Conclusion, I recommend approval of the modification to Site Plan number fourteen fifteen, one ten Scoville Street, expansion of a non-conforming structure, construction of a detached spray booth structure, relocation of office space and garage bays and associated site improvements, site improvements with the following conditions and recommendations. One, all conditions stated in the original approval of Site Plan number fourteen fifteen not specifically modified by this approval shall remain in effect. Two, demolition of the existing building as proposed in this application shall commence or the cost bonded prior to issuance of zoning permits for the installation of the new building. Three, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his October fourth, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner specifically regarding landscaping. Four, the applicant shall follow the requirements outlined by Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Basetta contained in his October ninth, uh, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three letter to the city planner. Five, the applicant shall follow all WPCA requirements as outlined by Edward Towsey, WPCA Administrator, contained in his September twentieth, twenty twenty-three memo to the city planner. Six, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette contained in his letter to the city planner dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Seven, the applicant shall add information to the parking table on the final plans for office square footage and automotive painting area and update parking calculations. Eight, proposed pervious pavers shown on the plans shall be installed or bonded prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Nine, the applicant shall perform regular maintenance as, as necessary on the pervious pavers proposed on the plans to ensure proper functioning. Ten, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plans, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box. B, one Mylar copy of the full approved plan set for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of, prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any commissioners have any questions?
I'm good.
Great, thanks, Tom.
I'd like to make a motion to approve modification to Site Plan fourteen fifteen, applicant Prospect Investment Group LLC. Location one ten Scoville Street. Proposal new building to accommodate auto spray booth with the following conditions and recommendations. One, all conditions stated in fifteen, not specifically modified by this approval shall remain in effect. Two, demolition of the existing building as proposed in this application shall commence or the cost bonded prior to issuance of zoning permits for installation of the new building. Three, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his October fourth, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner specifically regarding landscaping. Four, the applicant shall follow the requirements outlined by Fire Marshal Edward Basetta contained in his September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three letter to the city planner. Five, the applicant shall follow all WPCA requirements as outlined by Edward Towsey, WPCA Administrator, contained in his September twenty, twenty twenty-three memo to the city planner. Six, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette contained in his letter to the city planner dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two?
Yep, yep.
Seven, the applicant shall add information to the parking table on the final plans for office square footage and the automotive painting area and the update and update parking calculations. Eight, proposed pervious pavers shown on the plan shall be installed or bonded prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Nine, the applicant shall perform regular maintenance, maintenance as necessary to the pervious pavers proposed on the plans to ensure proper functioning. Ten, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plans, including the engineer's stamp and the chairman's signature box. B, one Mylar copy of the full approved set, plan set for filing with the city clerk in accordance with the section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Tom Tullman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move, good luck.
Thank you.
So, um, if you want to have Bill Colby, just call me directly. I can go over the, the changes, the few things that he needs to do for the final plans.
Absolutely.
That'd be the easiest way, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to agenda, item number six, new business. We have none. Agenda item number seven, correspondence, A, zoning and blight violation update.
Um, everybody should have gotten a copy if, if there's any specific questions as usual and any specific properties, just let me know. And we can fill in, fill in any, any gaps.
Any comments, questions? All right. All right, uh, item number seven, B, Commissioner Training Discussion. Uh, same thing, Jeremy's got a listing in our packet. We're on the counters this evening for the trainings that were attended. Jump in.
There we go. The only, the only question I had is, is, uh, Starley, did I miss anything for you? I, I'm, I, I see, I see there's two and a half hours still that I'm, that I'm, I, I have you down for three quarters of an hour of affordable housing and three quarters of an hour of fair housing from NHCOG March event. Did you, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
Don't need.
Two, two and a half, yeah, and, um, for, for any of these hours that we need, there's, online things offered and I, and I can send out the information for them through, through Yukon Clear.
Yeah.
Uh, and then Jim, did I get yours right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm still looking for two and a half.
Okay, I'll, I'll send out information and then Tom, Tom, you just need one hour.
Yes.
Okay.
And Donovan had sent me a text earlier. He has signed up on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so he will fill his, all, all four of his hours on that for that event. If he gets to, he gets to blow a chunk of a Saturday to get his four hours in.
Can I also do that for an hour?
So that, that one we had to register and pay for.
Oh, okay.
But, but I can get you, what I can do is just send you the Yukon Clear information and you can just pick, pick something that interests you and, and you can just do it online for an hour.
Okay.
Uh, but I, but I'll send out that info.
Perfect, thank you.
So the, the thing that Donovan's going to is actually, uh, it's, it's live down in Hattam, so he's driving there.
Yeah, no problem.
Moving on to agenda, item number seven, C, correspondence from Pullman and Conley proposed one point nine nine megawatt AC ground-mounted solar voltaic facility to be located at closed landfill one zero five Vista Drive, Torrington, Connecticut.
So this is a siting council application. We're just getting, we're getting notice. Um, this is actually city-owned land. The, the, the old city dump off of, uh, off of South Main.
You already read this in the.
You don't, you don't have to read, no, no, it's just, uh, just, I wanted to make sure everybody saw it.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's really the beginning piece of this. It's going to go through a few more stages with, uh, with, with the siting council, so I'll, I'll let everyone know as that progresses.
All right, sounds good.
And then the final piece I have is, uh, it's not on the, on the, um, agenda, but, uh, we, the only, um, slot that's coming up for renewal this year is, is Greg Peresino's slot. Um, we did get confirmation that he's okay to, he's agreeing to come on for another five years. So I think we were going to appoint him anyway.
Yeah. It's all right.
So, um, I'll get that done, but there's no alternates up, up this year, so just, just Greg. Um, the one thing I want to get sort of in the habit of doing too is really after our, our terms end, which is November thirtieth of every year, the following meeting, we should do election of officers, so we should be doing election of officers every December meeting. So I'm, I'm just going to make sure to add it to the agenda because technically it's a new, it's a new term each time we do that. So just to make things clean, we should, even if we reelect the same, nominate and reelect the same slate, we should, we should do it each December.
Ready.
All I got.
Moving on to agenda, item number eight, a German, the time is eight oh nine. Have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Backing from Donna. Thank you.
Sorry I was late, guys.
Next time, bring a note, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, have a good night.
You too.